Eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And we are all here. So I think I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We are assembled here for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. It is seven P. M. and we are assembled via Zoom. And I am going to read our mission statement, which is that the City of Oxford's mission is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and by offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. And with that, I would like to invite Reverend Bishop Philip Betts of Cornerstone Christian Community Church to open our meeting in prayer for all those who are so inclined. Please join us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and may we pray. Oh, God, we come first of all to give thanks and praise for your loving kindness and for your tender mercies. We praise you for your faithfulness. As we assemble this evening, we ask your blessings and guidance upon our city leaders. Bless our mayor, commissioners, manager, city attorney, and all of the staff. We ask that you would lead and guide them with your mighty hand and help them to lead with grace and wisdom. We ask protection upon each and every citizen. Be their lead, be their guide. We give thanks, oh, God, for the lifesaving vaccine that you allowed to be developed. We thank you for the many healthcare workers and volunteers that are on the front lines of distribution and administering the vaccine to our people. Oh, God, we pray for those that are sick even now, for their speedy recovery, and we pray for the bereaved families as well. We ask your blessings upon our law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, and all of those who protect and serve and bless their families as well. And as we close, we pray, oh, God, that you would bless us and keep us. Make your face shine upon us and be gracious unto us. And may you lift up your countenance upon us and give us peace. In your strong and mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much for your calming, wonderful words. We really appreciate that, Bishop Betts.
Most welcome.
Truly, and I would like to now invite Commissioner Ron Bullock to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and I think our admin will put the flag up on the screen.
Our pledge allegiance.
Flag.
Flag, United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of.
One motion.
Oh, God. Indivisible, with liberty.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bullock. At this time, we will consider adjustments true to an approval of the agenda. Item four, staff recommends removing this item from the agenda at this time as Planning Director Hart and the Director of Social Services and two staff members are drafting the details of the social services involvement of the Community Development Block Coronavirus Grant. Is there any, are there any questions on this item?
That would be item four B, wouldn't it?
Right, I was gonna say four B.
Oh, yes, correct. Thank you very much, commissioners. Yes. Item four B. Any questions for Ms. Hart? Okay.
I don't have, I don't have any questions, Mayor. You, don't you usually do roll call or not?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we do. So how about if we get through this and I will go back to roll call, and I apologize. Thank you so much. I, I, thank you. I, no other questions? I, I have one question for Ms. Hart, and it has nothing to do with the request to remove it from, from the agenda now, but do you have any sense, because I've had a number of questions from the community about what the application process will be for people that are going to be requesting help?
Well, that's part of the M. O. U. that we're developing, but our vision, us putting together an, an application packet and having them screened through our admin person, and then we probably do our chats with the other agencies that do provide similar assistance. And once all of that check out, we'll be able to provide that needed assistance. But that's what I envision the process to be.
That, that's awesome. So if somebody, for example, might not qualify for assistance at D. S. S. but has a very clear need, could they potentially be eligible if they fit into their guy, your guidelines?
If they fit into the guidelines, we'd be glad to help them.
Is, is there kind of a, an income in, I can't remember if you said this, so there's an income related to poverty level?
It is, and it's pretty generous.
Am I thinking it's two hundred and fifty percent?
Um, I'm not sure of the percentage, but I know it's pretty generous.
Okay. And so if they, if a person, and by the same token, if a person was receiving food stamps at D. S. S., that would not necessarily exclude them from being able to get rent or utility assistance?
Absolutely. We just don't want to provide the same service.
Okay, excellent. I appreciate your indulging me that. So I guess maybe what we can do is roll call at the same time as we do a vote. If there are no any, are there any other adjustments to the agenda proposed?
I make a motion, we accept the agenda with the removable items four B.
Okay. And Ms. Bowen, is it appropriate, can I count my roll call for the vote on this to count as roll call for the meeting since I missed it earlier?
I think so. Tom, is there a problem with that?
No, I don't see a problem with that at all.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Bridges, for bringing that to my attention. Okay, starting with Mayor Pro Tem, what say you?
Yes.
And then going to my right, Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Okay, that looks like that passes unanimously, so the agenda stands adopted. And so in order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct among those that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any member of the board knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such at this time. If you do know of, excuse me?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item five C. on the consent agenda?
Oh, yes.
I mentioned there, so I don't think I can vote on that one.
Okay, thank you. Let the record note that Commissioner Toby, I don't think you'll personally profit from this, so it's not necessarily a conflict of interest because you're offering your services on a volunteer basis.
The word said appearance.
Right, there, that could be an appearance. You're absolutely right. Okay, thank you for that. And any other, any other potential conflicts noted? Okay, so with that, let us proceed forward to the public comment time during which residents may speak on agendas as well as non-agenda items. We have three people signed up for public comment tonight. The first is Holly Batten. And Ms. Batten, I believe you are unmuted. There you go. And so I would like to ask you to state your address and restate your name for the record and the reason that you are here to address the board, and take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Holly Batten, and I am, I live at sixty-one twenty Tabs Creek Road in Oxford. So while I'm not in the city, I am on the local Nextdoor app, and I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with that, where local residents can post things that, you know, that are for sale or that if they have pets missing or anything like that. Lots of things get posted on there, just community interest items. And one thing that was posted a couple of weeks ago sort of tugged at my heartstrings, there was a picture posted of a, a dog who is chained to a stationary post in the ground, and it's within the, the city limits of Oxford. And the poster, you know, made the comment that how sad it was that this little dog, that this is this dog's life. I mean, pretty much he's, you know, on the chain twenty-four-seven, and he also posted a picture of his doghouse. And I've emailed that to, to you all just so you can take a look at that. And I can try to pull up the picture here. I was gonna try to pull it up on my computer, but I don't know if, I believe you could see it if I turn this around. I'm not sure. Can you all see that? We can. Okay, so this little dog's name is Bosco. And Bosco, as you can see, is a pretty old dog. He's got, you know, white hair around his face, and he's got a, his collar on. And then the other picture that was posted was Bosco's house. And so you can see from this photo, this is his chain here that he's, he's tethered to all the time, and this is his doghouse. And when you zoom in, you can see how, in that, you know, what bad shape his doghouse is in. It looks like it's collapsing, and it doesn't look like there's much of a bottom to it at all. He does have food and water, but, you know, this is, this dog's life pretty much. And the poster said that he lived nearby, and he was just saddened that, you know, this little dog's out here and that, you know, it, it's just a shame to see dogs tethered like this. I know that most of the people that, that post on Nextdoor are pet lovers and animal lovers, and a lot of us, you know, whenever we post on there, it's about lost pets or trying to find pets. And I actually saw a stray dog on my street not too long ago, and I posted it on there to see if it was someone's dog. And I mean, within minutes, there was a resident from Oxford, um, her name was Jane Delianback, who, I mean, she, within fifteen minutes, she was out here looking for this little dog and driving around to try to catch him so she could make sure he was fed and everything. So there's a lot of animal lovers in Oxford, and I think it saddens us to see animals that are treated this way. And Mayor, whenever you were opening the meeting, you, when you stated the mission statement of the commissioners, one of the things that you said that resonated with me was that you try to go for the highest possible quality of life for Oxford residents. And I think a lot of the residents in Oxford, probably most of them, feel like that our animals and our pets are part of our family. And so while we want the highest possible quality of life for residents, I think that we also want the highest possible quality of life for our pets and for animals that are within the city limits. And so that started a discussion on Nextdoor about tether laws, and there were questions from other residents about, you know, is there some sort of law that can, that is out there that we could use to try to help this animal? You know, what can we do to try to make his life better? And some posters were, were upset and, and, you know, were angry about it. And, you know, so that was, that started me searching online to see what, what was out there, and there were some other posts saying that animal control had already been and visited this dog and tried to visit the owner. And I think some people had tried to offer a new doghouse for him and, you know, just, you know, things that would make his life better, and the owner had not been very receptive to the idea. And so I think that there was a consensus among the people who were posting that we would like to do something in Oxford that passed some sort of law or ordinance that would regulate how animals are kept, at least within the city limits. And in my research of, of looking at these, the different laws that are out there, there are some that are covered for different cities. There are also some counties that have countywide ordinances that would prevent dogs being, you know, put on a chain and just left like that twenty-four-seven. And so we would, the, even though I'm not a city resident of Oxford, I think I speak for, for the ones that were posting that day and felt very passionately about trying to help this little dog, that they would like to see something in place for the city to try to be able to address this, to have an ordinance that would give animal control or, or city officials a little more teeth as far as trying to, to do something to help this dog. And in my research, I also found that there was a, a, a program called Pets for Life through the Humane Society, and that sort of showed me a whole different angle of this. It's, it's a program that the Humane Society has that reaches out to pet owners, and they acknowledge that a lot of times it may be that the, the pet owners are living in poverty. Because if you think about it, you know, with spousal abuse, that's something that cuts across all demographics. It doesn't matter if you're rich or poor, you know, what, what kind of job you have, what, you know, what color your skin is. Basically, anybody can be a victim of domestic violence. Well, the same can be said for our love for pets. You know, you, you've got people that are very well off that have pets. There are people that are homeless that have pets, and that's their only friend in the world. So people love their pets and, and the who have their pets, you know, that might be all they can afford to do, or that might be all that they can afford to give them. So the Pets for Life program was one that created outreach within a community to, you know, identify areas in the community where maybe dogs were tethered on chains or something like that, and they would reach out to the owner, not in a punitive way as far as trying to, you know, cite them or find them or take their dog away, but, you know, as far as, you know, being able to, you know, reach out and build fences and try to help the dogs, you know, have a better quality of life. So I think that's something that, that's what I wanted to speak about tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Batten, and, and we do have a time limit, so you've kind of gone over it.
I'm sorry.
If that, that's okay? This is an important issue to you. We appreciate you speaking up. Members of the board, are, are there any comments or questions that you have for Ms. Batten?
I've got some comments. I, I know the gentleman that saw the dog, and he brought it to me. This dog is a very sweet dog, old dog. He's chained up twenty-four-seven, as Ms. Batten said, in all weathers. You, we know how cold it's been over this last winter, where this poor little dog has been out in all that weather. And when you look around, it's not the only dog. So this is not just one dog we're talking about. This is one dog that we know of now, but there are other dogs, and I really think that something should be done citywide to protect these animals. My comments.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What Ms. Batten thinks would be a good remedy for dog, for the dog that she described and any other dogs that are in this situation? What is it that the city could do to remedy something like that? What kind of language are you looking for in the ordinance?
Are you asking me, Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I just, you had some suggest, you know, I, I was trying to think, you know, how do you help this dog? And, and, and all I could say is, does it mean that there's an ordinance that says that if you have a dog tethered, then you have to take the dog off of that at least twice a week, three times a week? What's the remedy?
Um, I've looked at several different tether laws, and on the Humane Society's website, there's a, a whole link that, that gives you, I, I mean, it's twelve pages front and back of different tether laws. And so there's, there's some that completely ban it. There are others that limit it, that say, like, like, for the example you said, that, that the dogs can only be on there for a certain amount of time each day and that they have to be taken off and at least, you know, have some sort of socialization because in the, on the Humane Society's website, it also talked a lot about that that's a factor in a lot of dog bite cases, is that when dogs are put on le, on these chains, that, you know, it's not natural for them to be confined like that to, like, twenty-four-seven, and that it does cause aggression and, and, you know, contributes in a lot of dog bite cases. So there, there's the complete ban, a partial ban, and then, you know, that, that, and in my mind, there, the only law that's there in North Carolina that talks about not tethering dogs is that you can't chain them with something that's, you know, extremely heavy for their body weight. But I don't, I didn't see anything there. I think it's important to address the shelter as well, because I think that's the other thing that's heartbreaking about this little dog is that, you know, his house is literally falling down. And, you know, if you're gonna have a dog on a tether, you know, if, if tethering's gonna be allowed, that there should be some sort of standard for their house, that it be weatherproof or that, you know, that he has some way to get warm. And, you know, I, I didn't want to go over my time, but like Mr. Toby said, I mean, that, that was the heartbreaking thing is that this was all put online before we had our two ice storms that we had. And so just thinking about him being out there, you know, in twenty-degree weather, it was, it was pretty saddening.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? Because this is obviously a pretty in-depth conversation, um, that there are other members of the community, obviously the person that posted this online is concerned, and there is also, I've been approached completely separately from this dog by a dog lover about anti-tether laws, who, and he is starting to look into this, and, but he's brought up two issues. One, whether it should be something that we should be looking to the county, to whether it should be just Oxford or look to expand it to the county. And the other point was that the downs, I, I certainly understand the concern, but he pointed out that he was not ready to come before the board yet because the downside of a tether law is that some people will relinquish their animals and, and either kill them or take them to the, the pound. And so he wanted to have some conversations with our animal control officer to have a better understanding of, um, the potential unintended consequences, because we don't want animals killed as a consequence of a, a tether law. So what I'd like to do is put you in touch with him, and I would also like to ask the manager, if our board elects to pursue developing an ordinance, under whose jurisdiction would that be? Where's our manager?
It would be the county.
Excuse me, Mr. Attorney Burnett?
It would be the, the, the county. The county has the animal control jurisdiction throughout the city and the county.
So the city couldn't. I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
Matthew Katz. Matthew Katz is the county animal control officer.
So are you?
We used to have our own, but we don't anymore. We relinquished that over to the county, so they would be the ones that would be responsible for enforcing it, unless we wanted to start back with their own program.
So you're saying there is no point in having a city, just a, a, an ordinance that affects the City of Oxford itself, um, because we don't have the staff to enforce it? It wouldn't be like code enforcement or, or, or the police that would enforce it?
Well, we, we tried that for many years, and we decided that the county was the one that was most appropriate to do it. And, and they generally enforce that situation that Ms. Batten is describing under the animal cruelty statute in, in, that's a statewide statute. And from what it sounds like to me, that's what that is. And not, not just a city ordinance violation, but a, a criminal statute.
So Ms. Batten, how about if I put you in contact with the person that was interested in investigating this further, so you can have some further discussion about it? And board members, do you have any further thoughts that you want to add at this time?
I, I think we could have an ordinance, a local ordinance. As Mr. Burnett said, it would probably be the, the county that would have to enforce that law, but we could have one within the city limits. We can't do the county, but we can do one within the city limits. At least we'd be doing our part then to protect these animals. And if I sound, I, I get emotional about animals, I really do. I think they, they can't, you know, fight for themselves, and someone has to fight for them. And this animal, not just this animal, there are others around that need our protection. And we can put pass an ordinance, a leash. There are several ordinances around in Durham and in Raleigh that work effectively. We could follow suit, if you say, but I think as Tom Burnett said, it will have to be the county that enforces that law.
I agree with Commissioner Toby, but obviously what the county has in place now hasn't affected this particular dog and any other dogs that are held on a chain twenty-four-seven. I mean, you know, it just, the thought of a, a, any dog being held to a pole the majority of their life is just, you know, just terrible. And, and, and whatever the county has in place now apparently isn't helping that dog. So I hope that we will, in, in, in concert with the county, will also think in terms of what we might be able to do on a local level, I mean, within the city.
Thank you.
Al, Al Curran?
Yeah, can I, let me add something real quickly here. Ms. Batten, if you can send me the pictures that you have, please email me those photographs. I would really like to have one of the shelter of the animal. I will pursue that with the county administration, and if need be, go a little higher than that.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Thornton, do you have anything to add to Commissioner Toby and Bridges's comments about a local ordinance?
I do not. The issue there becomes enforcement. You know, we could adopt a local ordinance and request the county's enforcement of it, and I'm sure that the county would seek some additional compensation for the enforcement of a special local ordinance in Oxford, but, you know, we can always have that conversation.
Okay, so we'll look, get, do a little further research and, you know, help us remember to, to not forget about this issue. Okay? Thank you very much, Ms. Batten. We appreciate your coming today.
Thank you.
And with, with that, I would like to invite Larry Kozart is signed up next, and Mr. Kozart, please again repeat your name and your address and the reason you are here to speak tonight.
My name is Larry Kozart. Stay at two oh eight Gregory Place, Oxford, North Carolina. I came before the city council about the violations that I got from your code enforcement officer, and I just wanted to speak about that. I felt that I was wrong, done wrong. On, I've lived in my house for over, almost. Uh, on, I've lived in my house for over, almost 40 years in this house. And we have, all of a sudden now, we start getting these things. I got a thing here about the ordinance going around here, junk material. I wasn't sure, so I tried to get to see y'all last month. I called down there. I got the ordinance, the letter on January the 19th. I called down there, Ms. Bowens took my thing, and she was nice about it. Uh, I asked to see the city commissioners for the next meeting, which was on February the 9th. And she said that she would try to get the city manager to call me. And then she would also put me on the thing for the Zoom to talk to y'all on February the 9th. Uh, I waited. I never got a call from the city manager. Uh, I didn't get a thing that let me know how to get on the Zoom for y'all for February the 9th. I called back, so I called her the next day, and, and she said she thought it was taken care of. And I, I, I feel like this was an honest mistake on, on, on that. But I just wanted her to, what he says on the paper is that junk material. I wanted to be more specific. I moved what I thought was junk material. Now, I, all of a sudden now, when I got, when I called her back and talked to her, I had a witness that came over here and said that your code manager came on my property. Now, I know it, and I pay my property taxes. I have some rights that he shouldn't have been able to walk on. They, they said he pulled whatever he could see from the street. And that's what I said. Now, Ms. Bowen went and talked to him. And she came back and she told me the stuff that she said he gave her a picture of. Now, the pictures, the stuff that she told me that, that I need to move, I did. I moved, I, I moved everything I thought he said to move. But it was the stuff that, what he said that he could see from the street, there's no way he could have seen it from the street. And while I was talking to Ms. Bowen, the, the Reverend Ronnie Morton walked up in the yard. And he said that day that Antoine got out of his car, he drove up in my driveway, got out of his car and walked onto my property. Now, I have some rights. He shouldn't have been on my property now. But if he can see it from the street, I have no problem with that. But all I wanted him to do was come in and tell me, say, well, if I moved this and I didn't move enough, come and tell me. Well, now you did all right with this. How about moving that? But I didn't, I haven't heard, all, all of I said, when I heard, then I said, I got a witness that said that he saw him come on my property. The next week, I got a $500 fine. Reverend Morton, next week, got a $50 fine. It seemed to me it was getting kind of petty. Uh, I just, just don't, I, I don't have $500 to give y'all up there in this city. So y'all treat us, we feel, me and my wife feel that y'all treat us like the second-class citizens down here in this little hole. And this is a little hole, and I don't appreciate it. And I just want to divorce my opinion about it. Now, he could have came down here, knocked on my door, I would have went outside, and he could have, he could have pointed it to me. And, and I would have went and moved whatever he said moved, but if he could see it from the street, that's all I said. Now, where I bought my garage built, it was no way he could have seen certain things that he named in his thing, that he had a picture of. Now, I talked to his legal counsel and they told me, he said, I told him I wanted to talk to y'all first, but they told me to go up to the clerk of court and issue papers against Antoine for coming for trespass. But I don't want it to go that way. I'd rather not. I'm hoping that we can settle this thing in a decent way that nobody feeling can get hurt. But I don't have $500 to give y'all. So if you want to, if, if go and get locked up, that's fine. I'd rather do that, because I don't have. But I, all he had to do was come knock on my door and point and tell me, say, Larry, you didn't get this or that, I would have went to work on it. But the idea that I got to be the one to run him down, if he's writing the citations, come and tell me what I didn't do, but just send me something that just said junk material. You gotta be more clarified. He got to clarify a little bit. I don't feel like we've been treated worth five cent down here, and I don't think Oxford has did anything to help us down in here. So I'm sorry, that's just the way, that's my opinion. I got a right to it. Y'all got a right to your opinion about me. It don't make a difference. But I'd rather not go through a fight with y'all. I haven't, in, in almost 40 years, I've never, y'all ain't never heard a thing from me until me and Michael started having problems. But before that, I never had a problem with the city. I never had any problem. But to come in and drop a $500 fine on me, no ma'am, I can't, I, I got to pay my property tax to y'all. I got to give y'all 2,000, over $2,000 for my property tax. If I don't pay it, you gonna come take it? Now, somebody told me, said, what you want trying to do is put an ordinance on me so you can go down and put a lien against my property? If that's the case, fine, come and get the property. But y'all ain't treated us worth five cent down here in, in a way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kozart. Any comments? Shall we move on?
Um, the only comment I would make is, you know, uh, to some extent, as a commissioner, I'm sort of in the blind. I have no um clue as to um what uh the circumstances were on Mr. Kozart's property. I mean, uh, I don't know about other commissioners, but I have no idea um what the problem was. And in addition to that, um, you know, how the code enforcement officer operates in terms of uh having access to people's property um without permission or notice. I, I assume that there was some notice prior to all of these issues coming uh to the forefront. But um, I, I don't know what happened in Mr. Kozart's circumstance. And so I can't really have an opinion uh about what happened either way. Um, I, can someone enlighten us? I mean, Ms. Hart or is the code?
Ms. Hart, would you like to speak to that?
Well, um, yes, and actually, this is not the first time that uh Mr. Kozart has been cited for violation in terms of visual blight. Um, he's correct, his property is Front Zone Gregory Place, and he, you can, it bats up to Bullet Street. And so a lot of the pictures were taken from the Bullet Street um side. As Mr. Kozart said, he called the manager, he called the clerk, but he's not called the code enforcement officer. He's not called my office. So if he can call those offices, in my opinion, if he wants to get this matter clear, he should be calling code enforcement to meet with him or either call my office. And he's done everything but that in terms of the code enforcement officer having access to his property. Um, if Mr. Kozart don't want him on the property, you know, it's his property. But, you know, we do have um a mechanism, administrative search warrant. So if there's cause that there is a violation and Mr. Kozart don't want the code enforcement officer on his property, then we will go the route of administrative search warrant to get the matter cleared up. Um, I'm in the office all the time. If he want to talk about it, we're glad to do it. But if he can call the manager, the clerk, and anybody else, certainly, he can call where the letter came from so we can get it cleared up.
Ms. Hart, can he call you and get it cleared up before he has to pay this fine?
He, he certainly can do that. My number has not changed in the almost 30 years that I've been here. Um, open-minded, I'll be glad to talk to him. But I will say that violation does exist. It wasn't made up.
Okay.
Is there any reason to think that a Mr. Kozart was treated any differently than the way you treat any other resident of Oxford who I is, I, has committed a code violation?
Mr. Kozart was treated as the same as everyone on Orange Street, Bullet Street, Gregory Place, and Sycamore Street. That was the area that we were focusing on cleaning up. And so he was treated just like everyone else in those areas.
Thank you very much.
Um, I would just be interested in knowing, you know, if Mr. Kozart was treated just like anybody else. Are you saying he got a lo- a number of letters, notices about, you know, what steps he needed to take before this action was taken where, I mean, a $500 fine?
It led up to $500.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money, and there's a lot of violations. There's a lot of citations that were ignored.
Okay.
No ma'am, it was, it was not ignored.
Well, if, if it wasn't ignored, it just wasn't?
I tried, I tried, I moved the stuff. All I said was, I moved what I thought was here, what he said to move. If it was, if it, you said whatever he could see from the street, and that's what I did. I moved everything. I even, I had my lawnmowers covered up. I moved them. Now, I, why couldn't he come and, and knock on my door and tell me, say, Kozart, you didn't do this? I mean, why?
Just, just as you were, just as you're passionate about it now, and just as you was passionate about it when you were calling the manager, when you were calling the clerk, certainly you could have called Mr. Rice, or you could have called me.
Well, why couldn't?
Why can't that change?
We, I mean, yeah, he could have came and talked to me, right? No, he could have, Antoine, no, he could have came and talked to me.
Mr. Kozart, I'm going to interrupt at this point because we don't want this to devolve into a back and forth. But I am going to say what I have said previously, which is that our code enforcement officer is responsible for an entire city. And anybody who has issued a citation, if they want to know the details, has the ability to call the contact information that's on the letter that they are sent. You can certainly understand that if our code enforcement officer has to start going back and forth and back and forth, we have to have some responsibility on the residents who are recipients of the letters to reach out to their, our office, to speak to the person who has issued the letter, to make sure that they understand.
But he has never, he has never did that though.
But, Mr. Kozart, at this point, you, you have had your say. We appreciate that. We have heard from our planning director. Is there anything else that any board members need to say? Okay, then thank you very much for coming to state your concerns, Mr. Kozart. Uh, we appreciate that, and we move forward to the last person who signed up for public comment, which is Jeff Shones. Is he here? I am not sure.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, you are, Jeff. I'm so sorry. I didn't see that. Okay. Jeff, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself and state your address for the record and why you are here, and you can take it away. And, and tell us what you want to speak about.
Sure, and, and I apologize. I don't know why my video is not working, but I, I, I thought I did everything right, but obviously I had a little issue, so I apologize for that. Uh, my name is uh Jeff Shones. I live at 414 College Street. And I'm calling on agenda item page four, section F, the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Um, and what I'd like to do is just go ahead and tell a, a little brief um history a- a- about me in, in Oxford uh and, and lead into that discussion. So we moved to Oxford four years ago from North Raleigh, and I actually came to Oxford to pick up a birthday present for my daughter, and I had never been to Oxford. And the house that we currently live in now, when I started to drive around, was for sale. So I went back to my, to my wife in, in North Raleigh, and I said, hey, I'm into Oxford. There's a historic house for sale. I know we've always wanted one. Uh, you know, what do you think? And she said, well, I don't know. So that weekend, we went and we drove to Oxford and we, we looked at the house. And uh we moved in here in March. So that was January, and we moved in here in March. So that just tells you how, how uh excited we were to move to Oxford and become a resident here. Um, so I, my current role i- is in, in, with GlaxoSmithKline and RTP. And as it happens, my career at GSK gives me uh skills that might add value to support my desire in supporting the Oxford development efforts referenced on tonight's agenda, page four, section F. Um, I, I'm the global design lead uh in the design-to-launch team for GlaxoSmithKline. And I work with global commercial teams and external ad agencies to develop product branding, logos, and pack graphic designs for GSK's new products. Um, so since moving to Oxford, uh I supported the Oxford Historic Preservation Commission in creating their new logo that's currently in use. And I saw that the agenda on a plan to work on the citywide economic development plan, which I, I think is fantastic, and I would like to offer my support and expertise in whatever way possible, uh either as a member of the committee or adding insight if marketing becomes a piece of the plan. And I just wanted to say, as a, as a resident and a, of Oxford, and, and we're proud to be here, you know, I, I'd like to, I, I'm happy to volunteer uh anything that I can contribute to the community.
Wonderful.
Wonderful. I think that's uh enormous of him, uh of Mr. Shones. I think uh, well done. Um, I'm sure someone could use you somewhere on the committee.
Well, thank you. It's uh, it's, I, we just, we love living here and, and we're, 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 you know, we love the direction, everything's going in, and, and everybody's just so friendly. And it, it's just a huge change from, from the North Raleigh life that we were used to. So, you know, it's the, the residents and everybody, so I, I really enjoy it.
I hope you continue to enjoy it. We love it here as well.
Sounds good to me. Um, Mr. Manager, you, you know who to hook him up with?
Yes, he does.
Well, that's great. Mr. Shones, that, you know, we all need a public comment like that. Thank you so much for your willingness to um put yourself out there. I think we're all getting pretty excited about the prospects for Oxford. There's an awful lot going on. Um, and I, in, there is a lot of hopefulness as we are starting to emerge from this pandemic and this economic development project for the citywide is a piece of that. And so the opportunity to maybe have some of your expertise
I'm gonna throw some hits.
Is, is just wonderful. So thank you very much. And um with that, if you don't have anything else to add, Mr. Shones, I think we will move forward from the public comment time.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Okay, so we move forward to the public hearing. And uh we are here for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the rezoning request considering of, consisting of 4.25 acres adjacent to the Walmart shopping area. This request involves rezoning the property from residential agriculture to B2 highway business. Permitted uses in the B2 zoning district include restaurants, gas stations, banks, auto sales, medical offices, hotels, et cetera. And uh so with that, I will declare the public hearing open. And I will, mostly I see city associated. I see one phone number that I don't recognize. Um, so is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item at this time tonight? And the phone number is muted. I, I don't know um Alyssa or, or Cindy whether that 252 number needs to be able to speak? Do we need to unmute them in case they want to um? In case they want to speak up? Can we unmute them? Do we know who that is?
I believe that may well be a, a staff member who's joining us on his iPhone.
I think it may be my phone.
Is it 252-908-3726?
No, that's not me.
Okay, okay. Can we, I mean, I hate to have somebody muted that needs to express themselves. Is it po-? And I don't even see Cindy anymore.
She's there.
And I don't see.
I'm here, Mayor. That's Chief Coley.
You're right next to me on the thing. Do, do we, are we able to see who that is?
That's Chief Coley.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's good. Um, so, okay, then we don't have anybody in this group. I see that the engineer Preston Royster is here. Mr. Royster, do you need, would you like to be able to say anything at this time?
Thanks, Mayor Sargent. As, as noted, we're working to rezone or, and eventually annex roughly four and a quarter acres. It's just north of the existing Walmart development. The applicant is Eddie Cottle. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have about this project.
Okay, thank you. We will get to, I'll ask the board if they have questions for you once the hearing is closed. Last call, is there anything else and anybody else that would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, well, with that, I declare the public hearing closed. As our board members know, because things are a little bit more complicated with a Zoom meeting, we do allow the public to, oops, am I breaking up? Okay, sorry about that. Hang on, let me stop my video. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. Then, as the board knows, we will, we need to wait 24 hours until we vote on this item in case there was somebody that did want to speak on it, wants to reach out to let the clerk know that because they were unable to connect via Zoom. So with that, we will first, I will entertain, we have Mr. Royster who, who is working with Mr. Cottle on this. Do any board members have any questions for Mr. Royster? Okay. Then, I, I'm not sure you can answer this question, Mr. Royster. I was gonna ask this of our planning director. I've had a lot of questions in town. Do we have any idea? And I, I know it doesn't pertain to the board's vote. Because if we vote to rezone, if the board votes to rezone, it's based on the general description of what's allowed. But is there a particular intended use that the owner has in mind at this time? And I understand if you can't answer, but I've been asked.
Well, we've submitted construction drawings for the project to, to Ms. Hart and staff for review. And what, what he's proposing right now is a auto sales and auto service center at that location.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from any other members of the board? Okay, and I just realized I have one more question and this is for Ms. Hart. We do have new guidelines that are being proposed in our draft UDO for that corridor. Ms. Hart, so it, the application of those guidelines, if that, if it's rezoned before the UDO is passed, but whatever is passed in the UDO applies to any construction. Is that correct?
So what I'm doing is reviewing it based on the rules we have in place right now. The plans have been submitted. The rezoner was first submitted to my office in January. And so I'm applying the rules as they are right this minute.
Are, so, and are, are do, because in the new guidelines, there are, there is a highway overlay district that has some requirements for kind of keeping the entranceway along Highway 15 Lewis Street coming into town, doing our best to keep that improved and appealing as an entryway to Oxford. So it's there no opportunity for us to try to assert that new construction conforms to those guidelines?
I think the rules that we have in place will make it appealing and keep it appealing. But I am applying what's effective as what it was submitted.
Mayor, there's no guarantee this new one will pass. So you can't give him guidelines that have not even passed yet.
I see that point.
This new, it may not pass.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, anything else? Then what we will do is, board members, do you have your calendars? Do we have a suggestion so that we can determine a time now?
Thursday morning at 8:00. Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m.
Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m.?
Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m.
Yes. Is, how do the rest of you feel?
If it's a short meeting, yes, but I've got to be in Wake Forest at 9:00.
I begin work at 8:00, but, you know, I'll try.
Okay, so, so is there an alternative time if Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m. is not agreeable?
Well, I, I don't want to hold the board up. That's not what I'm saying. Because I work 8 to 5:00, so either way, you know, but I'll, I'll try to be, be on at 8:00.
How about Thursday afternoon at 6:00?
That's, that's fine. Wait a minute, what's Thursday? 11th.
How much of the staff's gotta be involved?
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna, we'll have to be involved and be here. So, you know, if you don't mind, please consider our schedules. We're all going on 14 hours right now. So, you know, either 8:30 just before or as close to 5:00 as we could possibly get would be preferable for us.
8:00, 8:00 a.m. is fine.
Yeah. I'm good at 8:00 a.m.
Yeah, I would, I think that 8:00 a.m. would be better for me than 6:00 in the evening.
That's right.
Okay. So, Mr. Manager, is 8:00 a.m. a little too early for you? I know you need at least one person to come in and do technology.
Somebody will be here. We'll manage.
You can manage that?
Yeah, we'll manage.
Okay, then, that, we all do Thursday morning, March 11th, 8:00 a.m. Vote on rezoning. Okay. Thank you very much. And we will now, let me move my calendar. So, Item B is to be considered Thursday morning. We move forward to Item 4, City Business. Consider accepting the Certificate of Sufficiency for Petition of Voluntary Contiguous Annexation of 4.25 acres located on Lewis Street adjacent to the out parcel at Walmart Shopping Center and call for a public hearing to be held on April 13th. The city clerk and city attorney confirmed annexation boundaries and applicant signatures. The board can vote to accept the Certificate of Sufficiency and set a public hearing to hear citizen input on the requested annexation during the April 13th regular session or deny the petition. Following the public hearing, which will be held at least 24 hours after the April 13th regular meeting, the board may vote to annex the property. You have support information in Attachment 4A. Recommended action is that the staff recommends accepting the Certificate of Sufficiency for petition of voluntary contiguous annexation and call for the public hearing to be held during the April 13th regular session. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any discussion? Okay, so all in favor, I will start with Mayor Pro Tem. What say you?
Yes.
I'm going to my right on the screen, Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey.
Yes.
Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That motion carries unanimously. And we move, we, Item B has been stricken from the agenda. So we move forward to Item C, which is to consider adopting various policies, procedures, and plans required for the 2020 City of Oxford Coronavirus Assistance Project. The required policies, procedures, and plans must be adopted before any funds can be requested. The following are included with the policies, procedures, and plans. Fair Housing, Fair Housing Complaint Procedure, Equal Employment Procurement Policy, Local Economic Benefit for Low and Very Low Income Persons, Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plans, Citizens' Participation Plan, Citizens' Participation Procedure for Complaints, Code of Conduct, 504 Grievance Procedure, Language Access Plan, and all of that can be found in your Attachment 4C. And staff recommends adopting the policies, procedures, and plans. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
One question. With regards to all of the, of the safeguards that are put in place with this, where exactly will this material be available to anyone who wants to review it, read it, have access to it? Where would, where would it be kept?
I have all those in my office and we'll have some posters posted, particularly the fair housing, we're required to post those. So anyone that wanted more information certainly could, could get a copy of it.
But when you say posted, I mean, is there a designated place where, where this typically is posted or?
Well, we don't have anyone in our buildings there, but we will post them in our, on our informational board.
Does that include some of the social media sites also or?
No, we just normally post them on our informational board at work.
Oh, okay.
But if nobody is coming into the building, then nobody would actually see that. Is that correct?
They won't see it at this point. I don't know how long we're gonna be closed. And I don't know how long this grant is gonna be open. I mean, this could take two to three years. I'm just.
I, I was just curious. I mean, we have all these safeguards, but if it's not available to anybody, how would they know that those safeguards exist?
Well, one of the things is we got to, we got to adopt those safeguards in order for any funds to be released. And, you know, when we, when we sign the document and have the mayor sign it and adopt it, we're saying we're gonna follow all those guidelines and there are checks and balances to make sure that we're doing it. And we got to do it before any funds are released.
So would it not be possible to put something on, on Facebook or an advertisement in the paper that says?
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna do whatever we're required to do.
Oh, yeah.
So if it, if, go ahead.
Well, that was my question though. I mean, what exactly is the requirement? I guess that was really my question.
Well, yeah, the, right now, the requirement is to have them adopted and show proof that we've adopted them so we could get those funds released. But outside.
Quite, quite honestly, those policies and procedures are for us to follow as staff in handing out the money. The applicants are interested in receiving funding. That information and policies technically are for us to make sure that they're adhering to. We'll do everything that we possibly can that's necessary to get that information out on our website and make it available as we do other public documents. But technically, those policies and procedures are for the administrators to follow in making sure that an applicant meets the criteria.
Yeah, but it also talks about the anti-discrimination and select, I mean, so it's, it's for the benefit of the people who are seeking this type of funding. I mean, so, so I think they should I, I was just asking, you know, how, how do people know that, that they have, they have a right to, a, a certain degree of protection in a sense? But anyway.
Well, we have continuously advertised this information, really just about every media, every Thursday after we have a board meeting, since we've been talking about this for the last four months, it's on the front page of the paper, as well as a number of advertisements that Cheryl has taken out with that information there in it. And we will continue to do that to make sure that anyone and everyone that wishes to make application has the opportunity to do so and has access to any and all the information that we have, that we have to follow.
I, I think that, that seems like that's the concern is just to make sure it's available. You know, that, that people are, people are aware of that. And I guess there's a, a piece of that is the language access so that there is at least some, some effort to let Spanish language speakers know as well. Excellent. Commissioner Gilreath, does that handle your question for you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will go for, are there any other questions from any other board members? Okay, then I will go with forward with the vote. Mayor Pro Tem? Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm trying, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I got connections. I obviously had to turn off my video again so I wouldn't freeze. Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields? Oh, nice, skipped over Commissioner Bullock. I apologize. Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. People are bouncing all over my, my screen. I, everybody's been shifting in position. Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We go forward to Item D. Consider adopting Fair Housing Resolution as part of the 2020 City of Oxford Coronavirus Assistance Grant. This required resolution must be adopted before any funds can be requested. The required fair housing resolution supports fair housing practices within the City of Oxford. By adopting this resolution, the city is pledging that no one in the project area will be denied the CDPG programs benefits because of their race, religion, color, sex, familial status, handicap status, or national origin. And you have that document in Attachment 4D. So, staff recommends adopting the resolution. What's the pleasure?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, I think that came in by Tovey and Commissioner Bullock at the same time. So, Madam Clerk, I'll let you decide who made the motion. And is there any discussion on the motion? So with that, then I will start with Mayor Pro Tem. What say you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We move forward to item D, for, I mean, 4E, I apologize. Consider adopting the budget ordinance as part of the 2020 City of Oxford Coronavirus Assistant Grant. The city must adopt a project budget ordinance to begin expenditures of the Coronavirus Assistant Grant. The project budget ordinance is required by North Carolina law for projects that operate more than one fiscal year. This budget ordinance will govern the setting up of the accounting system for the project, and you have that information in your attachment 4E. Staff recommends adopting the project budget ordinance. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adopt the budget ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Curran. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, is that Mayor Pro Tem? Yes.
It is. So, how much is the budget order, project budget order?
It is for $900,000. You'll see that back in your attachment section.
So, I don't know if you can hear me around on the paper, I think I'm missing 4E, A, B, C, D.
Page 34.
Yeah, I'm missing it. After eight, yeah, I don't have, okay, great.
Okay, are you looking, you're looking at the agenda that you received this week, that's because it wasn't included in the draft agenda?
Okay, that might be the reason, all right, sorry.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Will the board be getting periodic reports on how the money is spent? You know, I mean, $900,000 is, in my sight, a pretty good amount of money. And I was just wondering, I can't imagine it's gonna be spent in a big lump sum, but I would be curious as to periodically how the money is spent.
Ms. Hart, can you speak to that?
That shouldn't be a problem.
And am I correct? That's excellent, because I seem to recall that there's something in all of those policies that discusses some feedback, anyway, about...
Section 7.
And section 5.
Section 5?
And 7.
And 7. Okay, it's taken me a minute to get to that, but...
Section 8 says, "The finance officer is directed to include a detailed analysis of past and future courses and revenues on this grant project in every budget submission made to the board."
The only question, another question I have is, who is eligible for this money, and, you know, I mean, like, how is that determined? Because I've had several people ask me about it, so I heard she has some money. And I know we just did some resolutions, but what is the exact specification?
Well, the purpose of this grant is to prevent homelessness. So, hopefully, the bulk of the money will be for people affected by COVID, which was last year, March 20th, I think it was, 2020. So, from last year up until current, anyone affected by COVID, low to moderate income, could receive rental mortgage assistance, rental assistance, utilities, internet assistance.
Okay, so, maybe I'm, not on your part, my part. So, this is not, businesses do not apply to this, right?
That is correct, no businesses at all.
Okay, so this is just for residential?
Right.
Okay.
I'm curious, what? How do you define affected by COVID? Does that mean?
If you lost your job because of COVID, say, and you were laid off from your job, then you were affected by it.
Right, we honestly envision this helping people who, in the scenario that Ms. Hart just described, if you lost your job and you were four, five, six months behind in paying, you know, your rent or mortgage payments, because of the loss of income from not having a job, this would assist you and also get the money into the community, because then you're providing the money to your landlord, who is also not receiving any money on their investment in their property. So, you know, we envision injecting some money into the local economy to help folks in those situations who have gotten behind. And as you're still well aware of, the governor's executive order still does not allow people to be evicted for, you know, lack of paying rent. So, hopefully, this will assist a number of people who find themselves, unfortunately, in that position.
And Ms. Hart, will the payments be made directly to the landlord, or will it go to the tenant, or how will it work?
It will go to the landlord, and of course, the landlord will have to agree to receive the funds.
Okay.
So, and that is, I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor Pro Tem. So, this was essentially what I was asking earlier on the item that was removed, when I said, "How do people apply?", and Ms. Hart said that they will be creating a packet that people could pick up and complete. Correct, am I right in that, Ms. Hart?
Yes, that is what I said.
Great.
Any? Question regarding the program, I'm sorry, Jackie.
No, no, please, please ask your question.
Regarding the program administration, in our agenda meeting last week, we talked about DSS getting a certain portion of it for their increased workload and handling some of the paperwork, as well as we refer to a gentleman getting, I thought maybe $25,000 or something along those lines, but when I think about the two numbers, they don't add up to 90.
Right, so, I think the $5,000 was to, and I can't remember what that was for, but of course, I've had that since removed, because I've been in meetings with Department of Social Services, and we're not gonna involve them as much as we had envisioned. So, that part of it has been taken off the agenda for that reason, and we're working out the memorandum of understanding to see what involvement, but the bulk of it, we're gonna do ourselves. So, we're not relying on them as heavily as we thought we would. So, that's why we're taking off the agenda.
Or the gentleman?
No, that contract has been signed, and we're still in contractor agreement with that gentleman, who, as I stated at the agenda meeting, I stated that he will be doing the monitoring business and be taking care of all of our auditing and representing us in that way.
Which is a relief for your department, is it not, Ms. Hart?
Absolutely, and that's to make sure that we are in compliance, which is the most important part of it. So, all the other components, we're gonna take on ourselves, the city staff, and we will still involve social services, but not to that degree. And again, that's why I pulled it from the agenda.
So, then, this $90,000, is that an accurate representation of program administration?
It is, because we'll be using city staff, and we'll figure out how much their time and that money will come to the city.
Okay. Thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem, I took a picture of the primary page and tried to send it to you in the packet, in the event that you did not have the budget ordinance. Did you get that?
I have not, but that was so nice of you. Thank you so very much.
I didn't say it for that reason, but I know how I like to be able to see what I'm voting or discussing.
I found it, because I went and got the other one, so I found it. Thank you.
Okay, excellent, you're welcome. Are there any other further questions on this item before we call the vote?
Yeah, I have one other question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Is it the landlords who will be making application, or the tenants? And, because, you know, I'm thinking, you know, those who have rental properties are probably people that are fairly well off. I mean, not everybody that has rental property is that way. But I'm curious, if landlords are not getting their rent, and this money can be used to pay rent that people were unable to pay as a result of COVID, so is it the landowners that benefit from this money?
Well, I kind of disagree with you. The landowners are not the one that's gonna benefit, because they still have the upkeep of the property, they still have to pay property taxes. So, they're not benefiting, and, you know, you look at the big picture, they've gone months without somehow getting paid anything, and they can't evict them. So, they're not benefiting, they're just getting what's owed to them, and it's keeping the tenants from being homeless.
And that, and because the deal, as I understand it, and Ms. Hart, please correct me if I am misstating this, but the issue is, the rent obligation for the tenant does not go away simply because there's a moratorium on evictions, the same as their obligation to pay their water bill. When we had a moratorium on cutoffs, also didn't go away. So, a tenant who is five or six months behind in their rent is actually, or somebody who's maybe behind on a mortgage payment, they get that relief, because when that amount of money will be covered, up to six months, am I correct, Ms. Hart?
That's correct.
Up to six months of rent would be covered for that tenant, and they no longer have to try to make that up, once the moratorium, because once the moratorium is over, the landlord would have the right to evict the tenant.
So, is the city getting money for people who failed to pay their water bill? And so, can some of that money be used for those individuals who didn't pay their water bill?
If they apply.
Why wouldn't they?
I don't know, I can't imagine them not doing it, but of course, they would have to apply.
And how do we safeguard the duplication of other agencies, other organizations helping to beat some of these financial obligations that people have found themselves in?
That's a good, yes, ma'am, that's a good question, and that's why we wanted to involve, you know, agencies that offer those kind of services. That's why we have to make sure we do the checks and balances. We check with DSSS, we check with the ACIMs, we check with Connor Innovations, those services that's being offered to people. That's why we have the cross-check to make sure we're not duplicating services.
But you also have nonprofits like the churches and lots of other, you know, people have stepped up to help meet many needs for many different people.
Right, so we're gonna contact all of the ones that we know of. We're gonna do the best that we can to adhere to the policy, and that policy is not duplicating services. We're gonna do all those things. Now, if, you know, a church just so happened gave somebody some money, and we don't know about, you know, we're gonna try to prevent that, but we're gonna do all we can. That's why we're meeting with all these agencies that offer these services. We've been in Zoom meetings, and we're continuing to be in Zoom meetings. We're doing memorandum of understandings, we're doing everything we can to prevent it, per policy and guidelines.
And does that include keeping up with folks that get the stimulus checks?
No, stimulus checks has nothing to do with this.
But in essence, if somebody, so, thinking back to what Commissioner Gilreath said about what if somebody is getting money from a church, my guess would be, I mean, if you're out of work, there are a lot of expenses. But if, for example, they come to us and say, you know, "I need money to pay my six months of rent", but then you're going to contact the landlord and make sure that that is actually true, correct?
We're gonna do everything that we can do to cross-reference this, because, one, we want the city to look good. We don't want to pay any of this money back. So, yes, we're gonna do everything we can possibly do.
So, the reason that we canceled agenda item earlier and not involve DSS was what?
Well, I didn't say we weren't gonna involve them. What I did say was, we weren't gonna involve them to the extent that we first envisioned. And the reason for that, because we're gonna take in the applications, we're gonna do most of the legwork, but we also gonna cross-reference with DSSS and some of the other agencies that offer services. So, we're not gonna rely heavily on them as we thought we would.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Well, I appreciate everybody asking all of their questions, and I appreciate, Ms. Hart, your indulgence in our making sure that we understand as much of this as possible. I think people are very gratified that you were able to secure this grant money, and that we will be able to get it out into the public to, you know, obviously, we won't be able to help everybody in need, but we'll be able to help many in need, and so, we appreciate that. And with that, we will go back to Commissioner Curran's motion. And I will start with Mayor Pro Tem. What say you?
Yes.
Okay, and to my right, Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner, why am I one, oh, Commissioner Tovey's moved. Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Okay, this is, you know, I don't know why people are moving around tonight, but you are. You're shifting your location on my screen, at any rate. Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item F, we move forward to adopting a memorandum of understanding and a resolution for service from North Carolina Main Street and Rural Center, a department of the North Carolina Department of Commerce to provide planning assistance on a citywide five-year economic development strategic plan for the City of Oxford. This is the item that our speaker during public comment referred to earlier. The North Carolina Main Street and Rural Center will provide development, planning, and implementation services, technical support, and training for a citywide five-year economic development strategic plan. The project will start mid to late spring 2021 and take an estimated six to seven months to complete. At present, all planning sessions will be held virtually with no cost assessed. And you have support information in item 4F, which includes a description of, a summary of the process, and the memorandum. which includes a description of a summary of the process and the memorandum of understanding. And so the recommended action is that we adopt the memorandum of understanding in the resolution with North Carolina Main Street and Rural Center to complete a citywide five-year economic development strategic plan. And so what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being no discussion, I will start with Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Toby?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. And Madam Clerk, I would just request that on the memorandum where I need to sign, if we can put my legal name, that would be great. Because right now it just says Jackie. Okay?
Yeah, I didn't do these forms, but I'll see if we can get another copy.
Okay, thank you. Item G, adopt the memorandum of understanding in the resolution for the North Carolina Department of Commerce will provide service and assistance under the Community Economic Recovery and Resiliency Initiative, SARI, abbreviated, to the city of Oxford. The North Carolina Department of Commerce, in response to the economic challenges small towns and rural communities have due to COVID-19, provide planning processes to help local communities develop strategies to recover and prepare local economies to be more resilient in future crises or disruptions. Currently, there is no cost or fee associated with the work being done via Zoom sessions with identified stakeholders. And you have support information in attachment G, which describes what this will involve. And staff recommends adopting this memorandum of understanding and the resolution for the Community Economic Recovery and Resiliency Initiative. No fee will be assessed for this work with the North Carolina Department of Commerce. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, I got Commissioner Bullock. And is there any discussion? Okay, there's, Mayor Protem, what say you?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yeah.
Commissioner Toby?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried unanimously. Excellent. And so now we move forward to the consent agenda. And if you'll, and that is to accept the February finance report and to approve the February agenda and regular meeting minutes and to consider reappointing Commissioner Toby to the zoning board of adjustment. So he is asked to be refused from voting because of the appearance of a conflict. And you have his application in your packet in attachment five C. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept consent agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Mayor Protem, what say you?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Fields?
Yes.
And I will not call on Commissioner Toby. Okay, that motion carries unanimously. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda. I'm going to go over the dates at the bottom and then see if anybody has anything to add, March 10th through the 15th, so that's starting tomorrow. I think it's been going on for this past week, Shamrock Scavenger Hunt on March 20th from 11 to three. We have a spring flea fling makers market and food truck rodeo on Little John Street and parking lot. And on March 25th, we have an Easter egg drop from 5:30 to 6:30, which is a drive-through event for children going towards the back entrance of City Hall. And on Friday, April 2nd, our offices will be closed in observance of Good Friday. And with that, Mayor Protem, do you have anything that you would like to bring up?
Oh ma'am, y'all have a pleasant evening.
Okay, thank you. You as well. Commissioner Gilreath?
What exactly is this egg, Easter egg drop?
Ms., Ms. Cheek, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. So since we couldn't really have our regular Easter egg hunt because of the, the restrictions, it's just a drive-through event. We have prepackaged bags that have candy, an Easter egg, little toy, that sort of things. And we'll have the bunny out there waving it, kids as they come by in the cars. And then we will just hand any kid that is in attendance in one of the cars will get a bag.
Do you have any, does it answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else you'd like to bring up?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Curran?
Just want to mention, I've been helping the hospital with the vaccine. They are doing a first dose Thursday. They opened it up this afternoon. They had 700 openings. If you know of anyone that needs an appointment, go to GHSHhospital.org. And if you didn't get it, I'd be glad to send a text or email to you. They started this afternoon, so it shouldn't be full yet. That's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. And Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, Commissioner Curran, I would appreciate if you could send that to me.
I will.
Yeah, I think that's good. And Madam Mayor, I don't have anything else. I'm, I'm just happy to announce that I got my second shot and, and I'm having grew, grew any horns or anything. I think everything's good. And I, and, and, and quite frankly, most of my staff have had their shot, so that's a good thing.
It is a good thing. Everybody, you know, we're all keeping, keeping our masks on, but there's a little less anxiety, I think, once we've gotten a shot. So that's wonderful, Commissioner. I'm glad to hear that. Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing to add except for I hope that we can soon get back to meeting together.
Yes.
That, you know, that's a great question, Mr., Mr. Manager, Mr. Thornton, you know, what are your thoughts?
You might want to ask the governor that instead of me, but, you know, we are still limited as far as the numbers that we can have and gather. And while that number has been expanded a little bit, you know, we typically have more than that number come to a regular board meeting. So hopefully with the shots that are being given out, and we had a little clinic here last week for city employees and a good number of our city employees have now received at least the first dose and will receive the second dose towards the end of this month. And with the numbers that we're seeing, like Commissioner Curran just mentioned of, I'm assuming Commissioner Curran that shots are available for basically anyone that wants them. You don't have to be 65 or an essential worker or any of that. You can make one of those appointments and, and get one. Are there any restrictions?
No, I can't answer that. I don't know.
But it, it is lessening. They're, they're now allowing, you know, kids up to 16 who are called frontline workers to get shots. So it's rapidly expanding, in my opinion, as far as the availability of the vaccine. And that's going to continue to put pressure on opening things back up a little bit. But, you know, I think we need to continue to be smart about what we are doing. I just saw the nightly news before I came back over here and they're experiencing a big surge in Paris right now currently. So, you know, we need to be intelligent about what we're doing. I much prefer to have meetings in person. I've been here this morning since before eight o'clock on virtual meetings all day long. This is my fourth or fifth one. So, you know, I'm getting a little burned out on it, as I'm sure all of you are. But, you know, I think we're still looking at better safe than sorry right now. And as the numbers continue and as they continue to trend down in daily cases and hospitalizations and even deaths, we get closer to our objective. So I, I, I don't want to really push that too much at this point in time. But I would dare say that within another couple of months, we'll be back to hopefully gathering.
That, you know, I know we're all looking forward to it. I certainly am right there with you, Commissioner Bullock and the manager. And, and I'm sure for Commissioners Toby and Gilreath who have had only essentially three and a half meetings with, you know, the full board. It's all been virtual. It would be nice to, to get some of that conviviality that we feel when we're in the room together.
It's been a long year. It certainly has.
Commissioner Bullock, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Fields?
No, and I thank Danny for that information. As, as to the, the shots being available and for people that can get, can get. I, I, y'all forgive me, but I was sending out a text message right then to a person that I know is an asthmatic. And I want him to hurry up and get the shot. So thank you, Danny.
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, you might actually want to just send that, that address out to everybody on the board because I'm sure we all have, you know, many have Facebook pages that can post it or just want to text it to people that they know that, that might be interested. And I think related to what the manager said about, is it anybody available? I think what happens is the, whatever the current guidelines for the state are, meaning if it's still 65, I, I don't know why I feel like I heard somewhere that might have dropped to 60. When you go in to make your reservation, your appointment, you still do need to meet those guidelines. But if, when they're running the clinic, there are still slots, then if you come on, they'll take anybody. If on the day, they still have vaccine that's available because they don't want to, to, you know, not use it.
Right.
I think that's how that works. Okay, Commissioner Toby?
I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Bullock said. If you look at the latest CDC reports, they're saying that those with the vac, had both shots can safely mix in a setting now without any risk. So look at the CDC. And there's one thing I want to ask a city manager, Alan. If you go around town, they've been doing some repairs in the road and left all the gravel mounted up and things on several sites around town, especially around Spring Street. Are they going to get repaired soon? Are we going to wait for the resurfacing?
No, those that you see that are cuts around utilities and typically they're very evident that they've been cut for utility work because there's a manhole or a valve array right in the middle of the cut and then the gravel. Those will be repaired prior to the resurfacing initiative by the contractor that did the utility work, essentially before they get paid everything they're due. They got to come in and fix all that. So, yeah, a lot of it has been held back due to, you know, just crappy weather, quite honestly. And now that the weather has broken a little bit, you can imagine the demand on the asphalt plants in the area for producing asphalt to get that work done. But believe you me, the city engineer and I have those same concerns and we are pushing the contractor almost a daily basis to get on with that work because I think we're all tired of, you know, driving down and trying to dodge them or rocks slinging up on our vehicles and things like that. So, yeah, we're right there with you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I would like to add this. I would like to thank you for your in-depth explanation to the person on, on Facebook the other day about our bad streets and our rough streets and, and so forth and so on, and your explanation as to what is going on in the city of Oxford and why some of our streets are in the situation they're in. Because when I first read it, it did bother me, but thank you.
Who, who gave that, who gave that explanation?
You did.
Okay, I, I know I hop on when I can to try to calm people down, but I didn't hear you say that. Good. You're very welcome.
Very good. You gave a very good in-depth explanation as to why some of the streets are like they are and not that we as agents of the city are neglecting our duties.
It, it is surprising to me how quickly a conversation on social media can devolve to a lot of name slinging and so on. And I don't, I'm not always aware of it, but if something drops into my email box that's related to a social media post, sometimes they come into your email, then I'll go check it out because, you know, I want people to, you know, there was a lot of discussion, I think, in that one that we're, you know, we're not thinking about what we're doing and, and, and nothing could be further from the truth. So anytime anybody wants me to leap into the fray, I'm, I'm happy to go to bat for us. So thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. I had two questions. And one of them is have, have we made any contact with the health director before pursuing any further our plans for hot sauce? Just to have some discussion with her about the plans for a massive public event in September?
Yes.
I believe Ms. Yount has provided that notification to the health department that we intend to hold the Hot Sauce Festival this year and comply with all CDC guidelines.
And we're taking, we're working with the North Carolina State Fair. They have given some guidance as well to help us make sure that we are prepared. But yes, she has been contacted and I have given her an outline of what we are intending, what we have required of the vendors, what we are requiring with regard to social distancing. We've increased our footprint on the ground to accommodate that. I've reviewed that with both our police chief and our fire chief. And I have discussed it with the, with Peter at the department, I guess, environmental with the county. So.
Excellent. That's, that's great. I think my biggest thing was just to make sure that there's a line of communication there. You did such a fabulous job with the Christmas parade and, and it was so nicely done. And I just know that after that, we want to make sure that if WRL decides to call her about anything, that, that she, she's on the up and up with, with our, your end, Mary. And, you know, so, so, so that any, any input that needs to be coming from our public health folks, we're getting it in, in, likewise in her direction. So thank you very much for that. And my other question is, I had requested before our board retreat to see if we could possibly get a summary of, for 2020 of staff changes, you know, new hires, transfers, resignations and retirements, because we've had a lot going on. And I just wondered if we could get something that would capture that from our HR department of all of the turnover activity? And is, is that possible?
If we start by getting a manager's report, could we include it in that?
We can.
Go ahead.
And that way, we won't need any more summaries. After, after we get one summary, we could just get a monthly update on any changes.
Yeah, if you're going to get it in the manager's report, you'll start getting a manager's report like you had before every month. So, yeah, sure.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And so, with that, Mr. Thornton, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
No, I do not. Thank you very much.
Mr. Turney, do you have anything you would like to add?
Well, I have a couple of things. I was able to get my first shot, and I noticed that Commissioner Curran was out there. And I would like to congratulate him for all of the hard work that he's done, because I know that it's not easy standing out there, waiting for people to come by and get, get their shot. And I was thankful that he wasn't the one that was going to give it to me.
Yeah.
Everything went smoothly. And I also wanted to commend Commissioner Harris for his article in the Oxford Ledger that encouraged people to get the vaccination. And finally, I wanted to reiterate what I said the last time. I come into contact with a lot of people, and, and they tell me that they're not going to get the shot. And they have no, no rationale as to why they don't want to do that. And I, I think it's incumbent upon all of us as city leaders to encourage people to get the shot. That they hear all these horror stories about how it hurts and all of that. And, you know, it's, it's not a perfect situation, but it's better than having COVID and sitting in the hospital for four days and, and not knowing whether you're going to make it or whether you're not going to make it. And we, we still need to encourage people to get the shot. You know, wherever they can get it, they can, I, I got on the Granville Health website, and that's how I was able to sign up for mine. And I think we're, I think we're actually at level four, and which doesn't allow just anybody to get the shot, but we're close. And there, there were a lot of vacancies on the day that I signed up for it. And I actually called several employers and told them, said, you need to, to sign up. They, they will give you the shot, whether or not you meet the guidelines on that particular day. So, I think that's very important. And, the people that are saying they're not going to take it, I think we need to encourage them to do that, because it's not, it's not just them, it's all of us. And we've got to act together. And that's all I've got to say about it. But I appreciate Danny's service for doing that, because I know it's not easy standing out there in the cold and, you know, wait, waiting for people to come through the line. But I, I think there, there is, there is going to be some availability, from what I could tell by looking at the website. It's easy to sign up. It takes 20 minutes, and, and you're done. So, please encourage everybody, you know, to take that step.
Thank you very much for speaking so eloquently on that, Tom. You are absolutely right. I, I think something tells me that Commissioner Curran could probably get the Most Outstanding Volunteer Award, because he has volunteered for so many of Granville Health Systems clinics. And it's just really awesome. And, and you're right, we need, we need to do everything we can to get everybody vaccinated, because there's no predicting who's going to be the person that is going to suddenly find themselves stricken.
Right.
So, thank you for reminding us of that. And thank you all for your patience. Is there anything else and anybody else would like to bring up for the good of the city?
This is first-time shots, Danny, correct?
It is. First, first dose, Pfizer.
All right, I'm putting it on, I'm putting it on Facebook now.
Great.
Well, you got the address I sent you.
Uh-huh. Yes.
Send it to your phone.
Send it to my phone to make sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
So, with that, what I would like to suggest is rather than a journey that we recess until Thursday morning at 8:00 AM. Is that the appropriate thing to do, Ms. Bowen? Okay, I see a head nod in the lower left corner there. So, that, do we have a motion to recess?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fields. And any discussion? Okay, well, with that, is, I do not see the Mayor Protem on my screen anymore. So, I got Commissioner Gilreath, what say you?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Good night.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Thank you each for, and staff most especially, for your very hard work and patience with our meeting. We appreciate you. And go home, sleep tight, and have a great day tomorrow. We'll see you soon. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.